It doesn't look like it.
So they do.
Our work.
Our work. We might just have to pump into batter. You didn't have technical good of your glasses, you know what been happening.
Who are you?
The sound.
It's a fair question.
Here, where you made it.
Yep, no, I did not.
I'm just gonna let you. While you have me as the town manager, yeah, because I can text you in the bathroom. Polarity, it's a thing. Everybody else in whiteboard?
First time I use the nine volt battery. Yes, except for some of the starters, yeah. Okay, we're good now. If I'm on the right side. Thank you, everyone. Did you name? We have all five councilors present, our manager, our clerk, we have the clerk. First order of business is minutes from our board of assessors meeting.
And chair, and we accept the board of recesses minutes from October tenth, twenty twenty-three as written.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye, John.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion back to five year. And then next, we have council meeting minutes. From October tenth. Any modifications for these? I have a motion.
And chair, when we accept the town council meeting minutes from October tenth, twenty twenty-three as written. Second.
Thank you. Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye, John.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
That's good.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion back to five year. Um, next, we have the treasurer's warrant. Um, I'll go ahead and make the motion because I've got that up. I'll make a motion to sign the treasurer's warrant dated October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighteen cents.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and second. Any discussion? Question? No. All right, all those in favor of signing treasurer's warrant, say aye, John.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed is five year. Thank you. Um, we have no reports and presentations this evening. And so our next order of business, we have public comment. Anyone here listening to anything without any other? Go for it, Paul.
Good evening.
Hang on, no.
Great, good evening. Uh, Paul Steinhour, he'll drive. Just a, an observation and perhaps some clarification. Uh, I try to attend all the town meetings or council meetings that I can. If not, I'll look at them online. And I've been following them for quite some time. Probably longer than most of you have been in your seats and longer than probably some of you have been residents in town. And for the most part, always a very cordial board. They've worked together. They've listened to each other. They've sounded everything out, very, very patient. But I have a concern going back to July twenty-fifth. We were talking, or the council was talking about the downtown RFP and trying to make a decision on that. And there was a great discussion going on. And for a long time now, there are a lot of different issues that the council is seeking input on from the residents. So there was a discussion item that says, well, before we take action on this, let's clarify and really gel what we're looking for and get some more input from the citizens. Great. You're always asking for that. It really needed to be done. There was a motion on the floor to move the question, to squelch the discussion and move to the vote. Something like that I find as a citizen disturbing because you're always asking for more citizen input. And this time a counselor took it upon themselves to say, no, I don't want any more input. I want to move the question. Now, we have traffic issues and traffic projects. We have a town hall project. We have a lot of large projects. What's the deal, guys? Do you want citizen input or do you just want to squelch it and move on? I think I know the answer, but I'm hoping that the council will work together as a cohesive unit and really drive home the fact that, yes, you do want citizen input because I think the citizen input will make your jobs a lot easier so that you're not so much on the hot seat. So just a comment, concern, observation. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
And off to the room. Got anything? Is there anyone on Zoom that has any public comment?
Yes, I'm trying to set the video. Um, just want to remind people that next Wednesday, November first, is the soup supper from five to seven at Spring Hill on Pond Road. Um, get soup, bread and cookies all for donation to keep South for work to help the residents of town with their food costs. Thanks.
That's Pat Robinson Brown Street.
Pat Robinson Brown Street. Sorry about that.
Don't worry.
I still have central hat on.
No worries. Thank that. Anyone else on the, on Zoom? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to unfinished business. Um, item number one, action planning board appointment. So at our last meeting, we interviewed a candidate uh, for the planning board. Um, and just to be transparent, uh, we, um, kind of waited to take action on this because this individual is not a resident of South Berwick and so we needed to kind of do some research as to whether or not, um, someone served on the planning board not being from South Berwick and that, you know, to be sure. But if anyone wants to comment on this.
I, I'm gonna stay from this one as I was on Zoom when I was not in the room for the interview. So I'm gonna step back on this one.
Sure, yeah. I'd kind of like to make a suggestion. Um, if we move our appointments to any planning board or committee or anything like that. We go into executive session to interview the person. And then there's a lot of times where like the question regarding, is it legal? Uh, there's, you know, and there's other questions that, um, we kind of have to, we all say, I'd like to sit on this for a minute and just kind of think about it before we take a vote. And, and typically we'll table the appointment vote until the next town council meeting. However, there's, we're lacking, um, a discussion between the counselors. But, and, and I don't know if this goes with having the executive session at the beginning of the meeting where we're kind of crunched for time, where we only get like thirty seconds to deliberate between the counselors. So I'm wondering in the future if we could either push the executive sessions for appointment interviews to the end of the meeting. So that might give us a little bit more time to discuss, you know, whether to appoint or not to appoint. Or if before the next town council meeting, we could also have another executive session for discussion. Because there are, I am still not ready to make a vote because I haven't been able to bounce some, a little concerns off the rest of my co-counselors. Um, so it's just something that I'm hoping we could consider doing in the future.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair. I think that's definitely something we've done in the past where we set up executive sessions to, in these situations, I think this was just like amiss or on my heart in scheduling that. Tim, is there any concerns from your perspective with us doing something like that or?
No, as long as it's in reference to following the statute of what executive session is.
Yeah.
You can call it executive session now and go in if you want to. Just call four, five, six, eight personnel. Go in and have your discussion, which can't be, you can't take what's you discussed in the executive session, bring it to open discussion on the floor, right? So you're either gonna do it open or you didn't move over. You could, if you wanted to, just say to finish this, you could make an emotion right now to do an executive session under four, five, six, eight personnel, go in and have that discussion, come out voting. Nothing to stop you from doing it. So you could do that now if you wanted to.
Could we have a quick executive session in regards to do last few things, um, too? So we could, um, do, make a motion to.
So I, I think, I think it's a great suggestion. I think for today, we'll do it a little clunky and we'll go into it in the middle of the week and then go forward. I think, um, maybe what our practice can be, can be too, because I, um, I hesitate to schedule the interview at the end of the meeting because then that puts the candidate in like a.
Sure.
Or is our meeting gonna be a thousand years long or twenty minutes? Um, but then maybe we can have a practice of scheduling the interview and then plan to have a quick executive session ahead of the meetings for us to regroup. Is that right, everybody? Okay.
Good, then.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion to go into executive session under four or five, six, eight. Made by me. Jeff. Second, just second. Thank you. Um, all those in favor, I'm going to get into executive session really quick. Say aye, John.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion passed by you. Alright, so we'll just go on there real quick. Okay, then, uh, I'll go ahead and make a motion to, um, modify the executive session, um, at six forty-five PM.
Second.
Thank you. Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye, John.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Aye.
Linda.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed by. Alright, we're back. Unfinished business. Item number one, actual planning board appointment. Um, I'll go ahead and offer a motion to, um, appoint Lindsay Quinn to the planning board for a term. Do you have an OAP on Barbara? What the term could be?
My apologies, I should have gotten that ready for you.
No worries.
Maybe it's twenty-five. I think there's one alternate and one regular.
Yeah, definitely one regular. We'll just, we'll just say, offer a motion to appoint Lindsay Quinn to the planning board in the current vacancy, current for full working. Alright, um, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Um, all those in favor, say aye. John is abstaining. What extension? Jeff?
No.
Jessica.
Yeah.
Melissa.
No.
No, motion does not pass zero to four with one extension. Okay. Alright, any discussion on that one?
I got a little circle.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on. New business number one, fire truck repairs. Um, so, I, the fire chief joined us this evening in the parking lot to kind of show us some of the repairs that are needed. Uh, the fire truck, I'll explain those in a little bit more detail, but this is more of an, a little bit more of an urgent request to do some maintenance on our three thousand tank. Oh, sorry, three thousand gallon tank truck. Um, so Tim, can you just kind of put it into a few sentences for the public?
Yeah, so the tank truck is the water supply vehicle for any fire responses outside the Hydrant district. Um, has been affected. It was sent to the council and the pictures are online supporting documents. They found the undercarriage of the tank. It's connected to, which is a steel undercarriage, which is connected to, um, the aluminum outside diamond plate has all started to, because it's metal on diamond plate, started to rust and destroy the diamond plate. Uh, the truck's only ten years old. We've had three prices. The company who actually built the truck, which is Bulldog, and they're, or they're distributor, gave us the cheapest price, fourteen thousand. This is an emergency repair. It started, they noticed the first part of it, early spring, and it's gone crazy, um, and will inhibit the use of the truck by next spring if we don't get it fixed. But they don't have the capital money in their account for all of it. Um, the cheapest one they got was priced in Bulldog was fourteen thousand. Uh, the other prices they got were twenty-eight thousand and a hundred and seventy-three thousand for a complete overhaul. Um, this truck is absolutely a necessity for the department, for the protection of citizens. Because it's an emergency, uh, I requested the council fund the project, but with, um, nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty from undesignated account, which you can do according to the uh, town warrant, you can spend up to ten thousand. It's an emergency repair. The rest of the four thousand will come out of their, down of their, say, here come. Truck will be out of four to six weeks, four weeks, we're hoping, get it repaired. That will come back undercoated, hopefully, um, truck will be good for another ten or fifteen years.
Great. So in summary, uh, for needing fourteen thousand dollars to complete repairs, uh, some of which will come from the CIP account for fire truck and the other portion will come from the undesignated.
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion or question?
No, after, uh, the show and tell with Chief Hamill, uh, it definitely needs it. If we can get the truck fixed for fourteen thousand and get another ten years out of it, it's money well spent. It's, it's not gonna get any better the way it's rusting right now here, especially. Again, we're going into wood burning season. We're going into chimney fire season and they're saying they can get the truck back to us in a month. And if they can fit it in right now, that's incredible. Um, I'll make the motion to allow the manager to use nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars from the undesignated account to put towards repairs needed for the fire pumper truck. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion then. And just second, any other discussion? Yeah.
I think it's important that we just kind of say that they did a, like a review of the other systems in the truck and everything was optimal and working fine and that this was the only repair that we're, we did.
That, thank you. Yes, uh, Chief Hamill did. Great point. Jessica. Chief Hamill did have him check out the entire truck, the motor, the driveline, everything's in great shape, the rest of the frame, the body, the tank. It's just where they overlaid the aluminum to make it look pretty. Everything got out behind it and it's rotting out. Typical New England.
We have a motion on that people. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye, John.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed by you. Uh, thank you to Chief Hamill for the show and tell this evening. Um, moving on to new business number two, downtown revitalization plan committee. Um, so Tim, I know, um, I think this is one that would be good for you to talk a little bit.
Yeah, I don't know really anything about this. Yeah, you almost sold that. So this is an ad hoc committee through a specific project, very simply, kind of like a palm plant, but really this is to organize together downtown revitalization plan. Um, they can't make any financial decisions. They can't make any, any decisions that impact community. They're just gonna make recommendations and, and to develop plans which you'll have to finalize. So knowing everything that's in front of the council right now, knowing everything that you have to do, it's on your plate. I didn't know if you wanted to, to call Phil Softser. Phil said because this is not, they don't have any authority over money or any authority over rights of citizens or any of those stuff. That you could pass on the authority committee to you and just appoint this committee. It's an ad hoc committee. If not, then you want to do it. You can go through all the interview process and build the stuff the same way you do everything else. Um, but if not, I can do it for you. Um, these are the names so far with people who have signed up to be on the committee. Um, plus, we would ask that there's one or two councils that I think, Judge, you were already offered to be on it. I did, I. And you, so, um, it would be that, you know, meet once a month. Um, it's mostly business people. It's your choice. You want to do the interview, we'll have to start setting them up for the next meeting or, or just, I would do just a night, another night that you just did the interviews and go through it that way and then put it to the floor. It's up to you.
Outside of the two counselors, how big are you envisioning the committee?
I, I would, because some people are gonna drop off over time. We found that, that some people just like conflict. Like conflict committee people just faded away and then some people, oh, you know, this month I can't make it and. Next month and we're always gonna, yeah, so I'm just gonna, we're, you know, I would just interview those people that. Put on the list and put that on there, we're too comfortable with needs, you know, that's it, I mean, it's generally that's how we've done it. Um this is a pretty good, about the size we want because of different projects that go on is. Certain different, you know, little breakouts that they end up doing and so forth, so like I say. Right off of that, I could tell you. A couple, two or three or four wanting to show up, they'll just, they'll start and come to one meeting and we're probably gonna see.
You got a pretty good fix there though, if you look at the names that are on this list of different businesses in town and what they own and what they represent. So it's a pretty good cross section. Um of business downtown. Going on last names anyway.
Yep. Why? It's your choice whatever, I I'm just trying to help you out with, you know, you wanna do another night out in seven eleven, up to you.
This is the group that would be working primarily with um.
Right here.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Right past and we do.
Okay. I don't have any. Questions left.
We just have like a comment to discussion, we had a discussion last night at Palm Land because of. What we've seen with our participation and it may be hoop us to level set with these these people that will be seated. Like here's the expectation of you being on this, so that it's clear for all of the committee members. Um you know, what at what point?
Right, but unfortunately, talking to Phil Sasha, we can't force them to come, it's a long-term committee. That's why it's not like the planning board, it's not like the zoning board of appeals, something like that, where they have. The historic committee where where they have the decision ability to make an impact in the citizen. You know, this is just an ad hoc committee, so.
Can there won't be any, I'm sorry?
I get your point, but we can't, well, it's of all fifths, they signed up, we put the ad out, they sent the application, Vincent Denise. We've got them, it's, John, just ask you what you wanna do, I can move them through. Or you can do whatever you want with it, I'm just trying to help you folks out, I know John's going on vacation. Everybody's getting ready for winter, a lot of things going on through the time of year. If you wanna do another night and then go through all the process, the paperwork, it's your, it's up to you. Phil's had in this particular case, correct? Okay, the two passes made made to do it and, so they're just gonna make, all they're gonna do is put together the plan. Just put it together, you still have, you'll have to vote in approval, so that's, they can't, you know, that's what it is.
I'm not, and this is just my mind, I'm not sure when the council or the whole game of being a developer, people wanna. I I I really don't see why Tim could talk to him, explain the parameters you're looking at. And then we'll go from there, we'll have two city counselors that can report back to the rest of the council where it's going, but. I don't see what we would gain doing interviews with them, but that, again, just my personal opinion.
I just think that um I I'm all about. Tim taking over the interview process, I'm just concerned that what I'm seeing here is a lot of business owners. And I feel like we're stacking the deck, because if you're a business owner in this town, you are gonna want this town to be improved and revitalized. And and I'm sure a lot of citizens do too. I I was hoping to have seen more diversity in this committee, like John had mentioned, maybe a high school student um to get. The future um of.
They asked, we had a high school student yesterday pull off.
They did, okay.
No, we tried to get that, again, we beat the bushes. And if you really wanna know the truth of some of these people, we had to take the applications to them and hand that to them and say please, Phil, listen. There's no interest in doing this. Then we're very fortunate to have these people that's here. So, and as far as making any decisions or directing the direction, you, Councilor, so we'll have the ability, have the council to do that. You will all have final say on what they bring.
And with with that being said, there's nothing saying going forward. Once we start that and maybe the general public hears what we're doing and the outcry starts. That we couldn't involve a couple of citizens, I agree with you, that's a great point that along with downtown, we need people that. Don't own businesses downtown, but it's much like the comments last night, Mark, free ice cream to come to a town council meeting, so apparently. Uh there's three people that are gonna get free ice cream tonight. If employees don't count. Uh I I don't know what all we can do, we did put it out there, but there's nothing saying, you know. A month into this and we had some citizens step up and say I'd be interested, we couldn't do that, correct?
No, no, you couldn't, but in thought of that, remember, there are gonna be public hearings on this stuff. And there are also gonna be breakout workout groups where they can, they will corral certain groups of people, neighborhoods and different things, whatever it is. Um that's what they did when I've done these in the past, so there is, there is an outreach to the public, it's not just gonna be, these are the people that are gonna work on. The nuts and bolts of putting the awards on the paper and do we want it to be green or blue? But all that will have public input, public hearing input and final council input. So all of it will have, it's designed to be a huge narrative with people, not just these six or seven or eight or nine. They put it all, we have to have public hearings, we'll have to have public hearings and a public hearing before it's finalized by you both anyway, so. The public will absolutely get to be on it, so rumors and times going with it.
And then my only other, um with all due respect to Councilor Seer. I was actually hoping to uh be on this committee where I was involved with choosing Wright Pierce and. From a revitalization aspect of a lot of it being um aesthetics and landscaping and also. In addition to um making businesses flourish in our town, I just, I could probably weave through things quicker for everybody on the committee.
I have no issue stepping back, I'd like to have Jessica there because she's on the Palm Land and I think that's important also. Your background, I have no issue stepping back and letting you take.
Thank you.
That actually makes perfect sense.
So no rock, paper, scissors between us then? Excellent, thank you, John.
No problem.
Um I do agree with you on the the citizen piece and I think, you know, I I know there's gonna be tons of public involvement. Uh as things progress, but I do think, you know. This is still so early on that I think there, I feel like from conversations I've had with folks in the, in the community, like I think that there's. Might be more interested in this as the ball starts rolling a little bit, so I think, I don't know, who just said it? Did you say it, the the suggestion of like, maybe we could add a couple of people later on if there was a significant interest from some residents? Because this is a pretty business happy list.
Yep, and so what I what I found, doing these in the past, again, people will drop off like Palm Land committee. People are just not gonna show up, they're gonna come to one meeting and say, let's do a committee, all of us. Well, so, you know, it's kind of loaded at the moment, but I think. You might have some people drop off as they, uh those are, I, every, what I've done, it has. And there'll be always an opportunity, like I say, to move, I think, uh people come on, so.
Yeah.
I mean, if you wanna expand the committee, you, and you know, if you get it too big, then it doesn't become productive, but. I I think you'll find that there'll be some. People that will stay.
Any other stuff after that?
What's the duration of this committee? I, I probably twelve to sixteen months.
And and again, nothing in the end, nothing comes, nothing is finalized, you finalize, you, it has to go to you for a moment. It depends on what Wright Pierce, how long Wright Pierce does to get us our reports and everything they get.
And and they average twelve, twelve to eighteen months, yeah, I think a year, a year and a half.
But this this, and that year, year and a half is simply. Gathering information, then coming back and putting something together and saying, do you like this? Nope, let's try another one. Okay, what about this? Oh, we like that, let's do that, okay, let's have that. And then, you know, doing all that, so it's a, it's a, it's a building process.
Yeah. Okay, so for this, Tim, um do we need formal action or do you need consensus from us?
No, I need a formal vote.
Okay, um so I'll go ahead and make a motion um. To allow the town manager to move forward, selecting committee members for the downtown revitalization plan committee. Um with Counselor Seer and Alfera Estella, joining the committee with an um. An opportunity for residents to join later on if there's a.
Second.
The motion a second, any other discussion?
By saying select the committee, um you're meaning this, all of this group, these are the, these are the ones selected.
I I think we're, because we're opting to not. Do the interview and we're not taking the lead on this, like I think. We're we're giving Tim the selection opportunity, so if he if he wants to select these people.
Right.
Then that's your, like, I don't think. I think the motion, the kind of the motion is to say we're giving this to him.
Right, to select any at all.
Yeah. Not necessarily the specific individuals. Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor of the motion say aye, John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, I'm. Alright, um that's all of our business for today, for meeting, um come in and report.
Um on the highway, they installed five new toilets on Boyce Pana Road. And have nailed seven thousand feet on ten twenty-three, it'll be paved first. Player will go on on Friday, uh they picked up the new plow truck that you saw tonight. Uh the trucks are all serviced and repaired, ready for winter. Um there's still mowing the roadside in the field and a new employee, again, early start of the day. He's taking uh the place for cocks and snow uh sidewalks and moving the lawns. Police departments had six arrests, seven accidents, fifty-three crash stops, looking into getting. Or three, the sweaters leave on, mental health counseling for other department. And other local police departments, it'd be no cost to the town, uh an office and desk will be provided. The police department, the town's currently using Sanford's liaison. And they're talking with Elliot, I'm chairing the animal patrol officer, has lost survival, retiring in January. Um and there's been no interest in posting the position. Fire departments had eleven calls, year to day is four hundred and twelve. Uh they introduced the recruitment campaign on social media this past week and have already had several inquiries. There'll be a recruitment information table, um at the open house as well, the open house is Sunday between ten and two. Who's gonna be provided? Emergency management has been working with the school district on disaster response and sheltering, in addition to hosting a shelter. They're also working on the district's cafeteria, vending for meals, sports, superintendent. Cagallay and his team have become a part of town's emergency management plan. Yep, code enforcement, uh one building permit, three plumbing permits, fourteen inspections, five violations investigated. Eight meetings for planning. Thirty-five block house subdivisions have been tabled until the unit is ready to come back in front of the board. Major home occupation got approval, a major home occupation approved, board will approve and sign. Finding a fax and a gun for us and two potential applicants coming into the business.
The library did their fairy house program again last week and that was very well attended. They also had all the windows washed at the library, which they do annually because of schedule they have to. Recreation Department, um recreation and travel soccer programs are wrapping up coming weekend. They are preparing for the Halloween fun run and parade. They shared Santa for breakfast with Santa. And the powder house ski lift is ready for the second, it's been a lot longer up there. Um senior program on the eighteenth, the seniors enjoyed a lobster lunch and during their visit with the light house was worked. And on the twenty-third, it'll be a Halloween celebration. Assessing, uh Bernie is halfway through verifying the map provisions from C I technologies. And this is the new event, they're good working way, they're very pleased with the quality of their work. The municipal evaluation report is complete and has been sent to the state, I did pass that out just a little bit ago, um it's a ten-page report. She records sales, the mill rate and all the valuations throughout the whole town um and that is sent to the state on an annual basis. The town clerk's office has given three thousand thirty-one transfers being stickered. And they are working on November election, two hundred and twenty-three absentee ballots have been sent out. And fifty-four have been returned back to the office already. The transfer station is working on maintenance on some of the machines and getting ready for winter prep, they're moving things around, making room for snow and power. Economic development, Denise is working with uh Maine Department of Transportation on the R F P for Route two thirty-six. She is researching U S D O T potential funding opportunities for the next phase of the intersection project. Um has been marking with three businesses that are interested in locating the area. And was working with one business that has decided to move from South Borough to Kittery due to the two thirty-six area zoning restrictions. My name, benefits, H R, I have had seven business meetings, twenty staff meetings and two appointments in the last two weeks. Mark from Stu D My Hair Engineers with your last Monday to perform an air quality test of this building and all three floors. And we are still waiting on that report. Uh Dawn and I attended Mike Glassell's retirement party last week and we presented him with a certificate of appreciation from the town. On all the work he's done in the thirty years to help us out with all the buildings. Um Brittany did give me an update on Facebook page, uh there was a question asked if we could do yes or no surveys on Facebook. And you can, and the storyline, and it will stay up for twenty-four hours, whether yes or no question, so if you guys have anything you want us to put out there, slide down. Today, um myself, Linda, Heather and Tim attended uh. M M A's employment law training, which was conducted by the Wiggie Council of Burns Denecher. That was informative today, uh close to my day. And I'm very excited to say the town hall that the window is cleaned too on the second floor, they haven't been done in twenty years. And big shout out to Kerry um McFessorian and Kirsten, it it's a beautiful thing to be able to see outside, just saying. It's a huge roar album star.
Hasn't really been twenty years.
From what Barbara can't remember them ever being done since they were installed.
I don't think they'll be, I don't recall them being washed.
And none of them fell in during cleaning, so that's a win.
That is a win, I'm taking it, I think.
We haven't done the third part, she didn't want to say that comes from the truck, so they're gonna hire somebody.
Understood. Um Brandon, I've had five business meetings, twenty-four staff meetings, two appointments. Um the website blew out, blew analytics, um three point seven K users. Download project pages had eighty views with twenty-seven users. Um last month's report was fifty-one views with twenty-three users. I know. Um handoff provided, you wanna continue with this same information or would you like the analytics or something else?
No, I think so. Um it was helpful to have this once because we published the tour and that was published on like the Facebook page. And I thought on the homepage, so we're driving traffic there, so we saw this bump. I don't know if it's beneficial until we have more information to put on that page.
Yeah.
Over time.
Good.
Yeah, I agree with that, I would, I'm assuming if I look at this, these numbers, like engagement is up a little bit compared to last time. I would assume because of the video, but the average engagement time is still less than a minute, but I'm assuming when you click on the video. That then it takes you somewhere else, which then does, that that, like this time doesn't. What am I trying to say? The thirty-seven second averaging age of time does not include time that people may have spent on the video.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Like takes them somewhere else, outside of our. Page or whatever. Okay, yeah, I think we can, we can kill them.
Okay.
Um scrolling back even at the emergency manager page of the website. Where any important information will be just played in the event of an emergency. Um we had a part of our management staff training. The town attorney, Matt Perry Savage, was here for two hours on Thursday doing H R training for the and and uh. Uh. Investigations, personnel, personnel investigations and all that stuff with the patent heads on last Thursday. Uh the employee photo wall is completed, you've seen. Uh. Meeting at Irwick Academy, we had our quarterly meeting with them, they're excited to be included in what we're doing in the town. Um just be part of it, to hear what we're doing. Um the town clerk has presented me a retirement notice pending my acceptance, notice I accept, and I'll give you to accept. Um. Real possibility, I will scan it into the computer, make it a P D F and transfer it back to Word documents, alter it or give it to you. So, and what it'll look like, that'd be nice to me for the next couple of months. Um. I met with, with myself and Jen met with Ken, question, and Mike Glassell will review the R F Q for town hall. Um that's strictly, Ken is, it does up the living number one, number two. Number two, so we're using him as a technical advisor to help us write these, these, our Q P. He's not doing it. We're not working with him. We did sign a contract and he's. Giving me a lot of good insight to write the R R P correctly, so you get. What you put in, what you give back. So, uh, Ken does this for a living, especially this exact thing. So he's doing it. Um, giving us crafting that. Um, he's done a very, very good job. This will be a very good project. It'll give you, I think it's gonna give you very much all the information and more. And not only that, the ability that if you want to take this and move that project forward and move deals. Um, we hope to have something next week, probably.
Yeah.
Maybe, so. Maybe the end of next week. Um, but I do appreciate both your inputs and your guidance, you know. I'd like to say I know our living, but I don't. Hopeful that you did. Um, we're working on the trash contract and any options that we have with that. Talking with a regional group, it's in tail Sanford. All of it in, the military.
Most of your county.
Oh, yeah. They're, they'll all come up at the same time. So we've got a meeting next in November. Uh, group meetings and, um, I'm also talking with Elliot about combining resources. And sitting down to talk about anything you do as chair and maybe resources together. Um, that's all I have. That's it, my vote.
Great. Um. Come on, my comment. Jessica.
Friday is the monster model fun run at Central School, the fundraiser for Central. Um, Friday is also a. High school football playoff. Hope to see you there. There is no school for anything you've been by on election day, which is November seventh. And this Saturday at Secrets Christian School, there is a harvest fest. Uh, mention that because they know the neighbors for the community and, um, they're helping out, also we know that a holiday is which I'm. Part of the community. Um, we had a comprehensive plan committee last night where we talked about community engagement as well as, um. Different communication pathways for getting our comprehensive plan out of the community prior to a public hearing. So we're, uh, looking for, to either host a public information meeting and will produce public outreach materials. In advance of the public hearing and we're hoping for a timeframe roughly June. We'll be planning for this kind of community engagement prior to a document, uh, it's picked over the council for a public hearing.
Great, thank you.
Uh, just a reminder that this Saturday is, uh, resident only hunting, uh, opening day. And, um, just a reminder for people that might be hiking the trails in our towns, especially in Oris Falls. Or up on Mount Agametikis, to please wear your, um, hunter orange, um. And, uh, good luck to all the hunters and. I hope, um, on the election that Councilor Cook and Councilor James find prosperity, um, with good results. And so good luck with that. And, um, everybody stay safe, trick or treating this year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Don.
Uh, I'd like to thank Tim and, uh, the director of public works, Jay Ray Marker and. Chief Nick Hamel, our buyer chief, for the adult version of Puts a Truck tonight. It was fantastic. I, I learned some new stuff on, uh, the new plow truck we have. And, uh, it's quite amazing where technology has taken us, but. That was, that was very enlightening. We bought trucks before and we had to repair trucks, but we never actually got to see what it needed. So that was eye opening tonight. I appreciate that greatly for both of them and you. Thank you for that. And it's been a great nine years. With any luck, we continue, but elections are elections. So, uh, we'll see how we turn out and I wish Councilor Cook the, the best luck in the election. And maybe we'll be back in a few weeks. That's all I have to. Just wanted to, uh, thank. The council and Tim, uh, for doing the training, preventing this building a lot, and we will do this a lot. In the building a lot this week, uh, so appreciate the, the training. Uh, I do think that it is, uh. Helpful in being able to give us, uh. Insight of how, you know, just where we need to be and stuff like that. So, and I do think that, um. You know, it's, it's helpful for how we conduct ourselves as was brought up today. Um, you know, though. Um. It was, um. In a different, the, the time is maybe misconstrued, um, by the public comment, but, um. I would say that I think this training would be, is, would be helpful to avoid situations like that in the future. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you, um. We have a workshop tomorrow with planning board. Just a reminder for the council, sorry, um, because. Four of us, well, no, we've all been here, or did you say? Uh, we have a plan, a workshop planning board tomorrow, talk about early two thousand three or whatever the number is that I always forget. Um. And good luck to Don and Heather in the election. Good luck to me in the election. Um, it's really been a pleasure the last six years. It's been a pleasure being the chair for the last couple of years. So, um. Looking forward to hopefully all five of us being back here in a few weeks.
Madam Chair, possibly for the last time, and we'll be adjourned.
Second. Second, all those in favor of the aye?
Aye.